Gary with you. All right. Hi, everybody. This is the East Hampton City Council Property Committee. Today is Monday, November 29th, 2021 is 6:00 P. M. Due to the extension of the order from Governor Baker, we are holding this meeting remotely due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Present today, I see our members, Counselor Kuzynski and Counselor Flood. And we will be delving into a couple items on the agenda. We have two poll requests as well as a boundary line discussion that we will get into shortly. We have minutes from, I just had those. We have minutes from our, our November 1st, 2021 meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those?
I do have one very minor correction at the very top. I spelt November incorrectly, so I'm just going to add an E. Little bit of attention to detail. I didn't catch anything else, but that jumped out at me.
Okay. Counselor Kuzynski, any questions about those?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of November 1.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the minutes from November 1st. Counselor Kuzynski, how do you vote?
I.
Counselor Flood?
I'm an I.
I am also an I. Minutes approved, three to nothing, three zero in favor for 11-1, 2021. At this time, I will open up the floor to any members of the public who would like to speak on items other than our three agenda items as being two poll requests and a boundary line discussion. Is there anyone here from the public? You can either turn your camera on, although let me make sure I could see everybody. You can either turn your camera on and raise your hand or use the raise hand function available on Zoom. Anybody?
Does Ruby know how to raise her hands?
That wasn't my dog.
Oh, it wasn't?
No.
It wasn't my dog.
So seeing, seeing no one, we can move into the, our agenda items. Is due to Counselors Kuzynski and Flood, do either of you have any preference where we start tonight?
No preference.
Clearly your choice.
Okay, so there's this request from the November 3rd packet regarding clarifying the boundary line between Daniel Daigle, who lives, his property is right next to the, what is it? The, is it the wastewater, not the wastewater treatment plant, but they're next to one of the DPW properties.
November 3rd packet? Is that accurate?
Mm-hmm. Do you not have that?
I had, no, let me just look. I didn't have that one. I was looking at 17. Well, would you mind just, are you able to do a screen share so I could?
I absolutely am. Yeah, let me get back.
I know I saw it, but I was looking.
Let me, let me pull this up and we can go, when we can go through this item. Let me just get, get to where it was. I'm sorry. I was just scrolling. Okay. So I will, let me share my screen and we can, I'm happy to read through this.
Fantastic.
Okay, can you, can you all see this? It should be reading President Collins, as you may be aware.
Can you enlarge the, the type or remove the, the left hand? A little bit bigger.
Yep. One second, let me do this.
That makes it a bit bigger, yes.
Is that good?
That, that works perfectly for me.
Okay. No problem. Um, would it be helpful if I read this letter out loud for both the committee as well as the public?
I, I certainly don't. I, I am fine reading, but if there's members of the public that don't have access to the video, I, I would certainly be amenable to reading.
I'm good. Either way, I can reflect this in our minutes as well.
I'll just read the, the, the two salient points. As you may be aware, the city has for some time been in discussion with Daniel Daigle relative to clearing up the boundary line between his property and the city's property, the water treatment plant. This is the one off of Hendrick Street and clearing up an easement for an existing sewer line across Mr. Daigle's property. Following discussions between myself, Mr. Daigle's attorney and the DWP, we have agreed on the boundary line and an easement to resolve these issues. And then there's a resolution as well as some documents with property parcel drawings and schematics, which I can share if you would like.
I would like that.
Absolutely. So let me skip down to those pictures and it, it, the, from my understanding and emails from the city attorney, it sounds like that their hour, the, the purpose of this vote would be to allow the mayor to enter into negotiations to delineate this property line as well as the easements. And it sounds like our solicitor has no concerns. So let me get down to where we're talking about. So. Okay. All right. Do you, could you see this?
Yes.
All right. So I'll, I'll highlight a few things. So I'm just going to zoom in. So here, here, this parcel is the, the Daigle parcel. And just trying to familiarize myself exactly. There's this detail here.
I think the detail would be the circle that is off screen at the moment.
Right here?
At the top, top left. If, if you would say see detail in the circle.
Mm-hmm.
I got it. Yep.
And that in the, in the top left at the intersection of Gravel Drive and.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, right.
Detail of the, of, of what you did says see detail. Okay. Typically, that's the case. Presuming that's what.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand now which one is the actual. I'm just trying to.
May I clarify or ask for clarification for which, where are we on Hendrick right now on this map?
So this is, this is down, you know where the, the water treatment plant is?
Yes.
On the, it's, it's more on the, the Holy Oak Street side of Hendricks.
Yep, yep. And that gravel drive is the driveway that goes down to the treatment plant?
Yes. Okay, I'm just trying to clarify now which, where these actual boundaries are that we're talking about.
Is it that, oh wait, it's referenced in our thing. Is it this 170-1? No.
No. Let me go back up because I want to.
A little bit, just.
What's up?
Bring up the bottom of the map just before you go up. Okay, go ahead. That's fine. Yep, thank you. Different map. Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm trying to, oh, is there another map here? I'm just trying to understand where the actual. Oh, here we go. Okay, this might be better. So here's the Daigle property.
Okay, proposed 30-inch wide sanitary sewer easement I see in the upper right corner.
I'm just gonna go up for a second because I'm just trying to orient myself. I seem to be having a hard time doing so.
And then that easement is in this lower left corner then. So upper right corner of the document below, lower left corner. So right here, proposed 30-inch wide easement with the arrow.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Now, if you go up and just to the left, here we are next to the.
Oh, I see. Yeah, it's just not marked. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, it's, okay, I see. Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Sorry, that was Siri.
Okay.
So forgiving.
And I don't know if there's anyone here from the public to address this. I don't.
So my reading, it's, it's a large parcel of land. There's no residential. How, it's not residential. Is that correct? This to me looks like I saw 24 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Don't see any house nearby. And this is just coming up to the line, so we need that space to complete this section.
It's my understanding. And then there's some clarification of the boundaries as well, which I think are, I'm just gonna, sorry for all the scrolling up and down.
That's okay.
See, these are oriented differently. So on this map, Hendrick Street is on the bottom. And on this map, Hendrick Street is at the, up the, in the, the left-hand corner.
Yeah.
And mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding exactly where everything's oriented here. I'm just gonna scroll down, see if there's another map. Oh, here's another map as well. Right. Okay, well, here's the, so here's the sewer easement. You see that on this map? Up here.
Whoops.
No, which is over, which is over here. Right, which is over here.
Yep, it continues.
I don't think this first map is as. So I think on this first map, the, the parcel in question is actually over here. That's my understanding. And then if you come, as we come down, here's, because here's Broadbrook. I'm gonna scroll up again. I'm sorry. Here's, here's, here's Broadbrook. I think this, this down here is the tail end here that we're seeing.
Yeah, because I see the footpath there.
I'd say without getting into the weeds too much, I think that there, the no one's contacted, has anyone contacted either the two other counselors in the committee about this, this issue?
No, that was gonna be my question. I've heard no public comment, no comment from the owner. It sounds like the owner's engaged in these discussions.
Mm-hmm.
So if nobody else is here to oppose or make known any concerns, I would be happy to approve. I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
Do we, do we have the owner here with us?
No. No, I did receive a email from the, forwarded to me by the city attorney, but it basically supported the, the fact that the solicitor and the owner, the owner's attorney have agreed to the boundary lines in question as well as the easement for utilities. It would be helpful if someone to explain the map because I'm still having a hard time orienting myself. But in, in Counselor Kuzynski, usually a little bit more shrewd about this than I am. My general feeling is that if the, if the solicitor is satisfied with the, the draft agreement, then I would be as well, but I just, I would leave it to the two other members of the committee to ask any questions or raise any concerns.
Not having heard from anyone, I don't have any specific issues that I think the public has addressed thus far. However, it always is good to understand the maps and helpful if we could have a presentation before the full council that would be able to describe exactly. Do you have the document again available?
Yes, you want me to go back up to the introduction?
To the introduction document and just, just take a quick peek at that. Only I can't read that size yet. Oh, good.
So there's also, sorry, I had the, I don't want to give. It might be, I mean.
I think, I think we're looking at, I'm looking at the actual description of what.
Do you want me to walk through? Because the, the actual resolution.
Pages, that would be great. Just give me a second on the pages.
Oh, sorry.
Then not that one, but the next one, please?
Yeah, that's what I think is, this is more.
Whereas, yeah, okay, that's pretty clear. The city has a sewer line running over the Daigle property, but there's no easement of record. That's whereas number five, I think.
Mm-hmm.
So we need an easement over the other parties.
Correct, and they've agreed to that.
In order to maintain it, it ma, it makes it very clear. He's agreed to the easement. Okay, DPW has been consulted, determined the best interest of the city. Okay. So he, the current sewer line goes through his property, it looks like, without an easement. Now, that's not all that uncommon that happens. We've seen that before here on the council. The difficulty is if, if there was a, a problem with the sewer line, then we have to go in with, you know, and go ahead and fix it. And that creates a bit of an issue. And it doesn't prevent the owner from necessarily, on its face, building something over the sewer line. If I'm making myself clear. At some point, if there's, if there's a sewer line under somebody's property and they said, let's put a pool up or let's, let's build a shed or build an outbuilding or, or something within the confines of their ability to build it. Let's say without getting a, a building permit because a certain sized shed just can be constructed. Or to go and get a permit, they would, all intents and purposes have the right to do so. And I think the point here, it looks like, is to get that easement. It doesn't sound like there's any consideration. And that would be a question that I would have. Was there, were we gonna be paying lots of money for the easement? Was it something that the parties have agreed to without payment? That really hasn't been stated, but it looks like the mayor has, we're authorizing the mayor to go ahead and make this determination. Now, if she determines that it, there isn't any great number of dollars involved for a dollar, $10 or nominal fee, that all makes sense. The question, and I presume the mayor's gonna do a fine job in negotiating this. He's probably been working hard on it already. So now that I think we understand what the, what, 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 what's happening, it's our, we want the easement over land, over sewer line that we already have. I, were there other lines or boundaries that were being changed in exchange for that? And what was being, what, what was the previous boundary that the city had? What are we giving up in exchange for the, for this, for getting the sewer line?
Yeah, yeah, why don't we scroll down a little bit more and see if there's any? Let's, let's, let's see. My understanding, Counselor Kuzynski, is I think that it was more of a clarification of the boundary line to define it appropriately. And I request the easement. I don't think from my, what I've read through these materials, that there's any fundamental change or exchange.
That being the case, if there are no fundamental changes, I would second the motion made by Counselor Flood.
So I would, I'll refine my language on the motion. I would motion to approve the resolution to authorize the mayor to negotiate and enter into a boundary line agreement and accept the easement described there and just for the record.
Okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll study these maps a little bit better before Wednesday and try to get a better orientation of exactly what we're talking about. There's references here to each of the maps. So we have a, we have a motion in a second to allow the mayor to enter into a negotiation to agreements and execute the instruments rela, to, relative to or necessarily effectuate and implement boundary line agreement, easement agreement, and the release of claims as well. I will take a vote. Counselor Kuzynski, how do you vote in terms of recommendation to council?
In favor?
Okay, Counselor Flood?
I'm an I.
I'm also an I, but I'll, I will review this more before Wednesday to, just the maps, I find a little confusing and I need to try to get a better understanding. So I apologize and I appreciate your patience while I kind of muddled through that tonight. So motion passed is three, nothing to recommend to allow the mayor to enter into negotiations as described. Any further comments on this topic?
No.
Okay, good. Let's put that behind us. So the next is, the next agenda item, there we have two poll requests. One on Ballard Street, one on Park Street. Is there anyone here? I see that Nicholas is here from EverSource. Are you, Nick, are you here for both of these or just one of these?
Good evening. I'll be handling Park Street. My colleague Anthony will be discussing Ballard Street.
Okay, so Anthony, would you mind just introducing the Ballard Street request for the committee, please?
Sure. I got it pulled up on my computer. If you want me to share my screen real quick, I can do that.
Yes, I need to make you a co-host, which I'm happy to do. Give you one second.
If it's a lot of trouble, I can just describe it, though.
I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And you should now be a co-host, I believe.
Okay, I'm sharing the, it's just an Adobe version of this petition that I built. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep.
So basically, what we're doing is, what we'd like to do is pull a span of overhead cable to a pole on Ballard Street from existing pole five over six. It's gonna be about 150 feet up the street. And then we need to take some cable underground to, to pad mount transformers for some homes going in, in the parcel that is number 20 and number 30. They're owned by the same couple.
Okay. So do either Counselor Kuzynski, you have any, any preliminary questions?
Well, I, I heard you say string a line 150, but where will the, the pole is the, is your circle? That's the proposed pole. There's one proposed pole.
Correct.
Near the corner of Lot 20 on, on this map.
It's sort of in the middle section of Lot 20. And then these two squares here, that's gonna be a pad mounted transformer with a handhole right behind it. And this is gonna be another pad mounted transfer further up the street.
And those are supposed to run underground?
Correct.
Where does the wire that you currently have go now?
There is a line of cable that ends sort of right shy of number 21 here. It's kind of faded, but there's a.
On the opposite side of the road.
Yes.
Okay, so the, the, the line will cross the road?
Yes.
And go to what I think of as the west side, left side?
Yeah, that's the west, northwest side.
Oh, okay. I think I understand. I don't have any other questions about this.
Counselor Flood, any questions?
I guess, well, just my, my one. So this is just an EverSource pole. I'm so used to seeing jointly owned pole requests. So this one is just solely owned by EverSource, will only be used by EverSource. Is that correct?
At this time, they're not, they have no need to pull any telephone. So they're going to, I mean, if the phone company wants to petition to jump onto this pole at some point down the line, they can. But for, as far as this construction's concerned, it's just gonna be EverSource electrical wires on it.
Okay, and then second question is typically with these poll requests, we do ask for. Okay, and then second question is typically with these poll requests, we do ask for future city access. Is that something counselors that we should be doing here? Um, with this request?
It's interesting, I've never had a non jointly owned pole.
Yeah, that's a new one.
Right.
So, uh.
I mean, typically, there's already telecommunications on there, but I'm just thinking if there's ever municipal light plant need for pole access here, would we be able to have that available?
That's a great question, and I, I, I think we should reserve the right to uh run a access as we have in the past.
So Anthony, what we're getting at is typically when we do these poll requests, and as the other members of the committee have said, we, there's usually telecom attached to these. We usually will, will make sure that we include language that stipulates um conduit or space for um expansion of or, or um city owned communication lines. Um, and so I think that it might be smart at this point that we would probably make this a similar request for this pole as well.
All right, um, it's a, I mean, it's a, it's a forty foot pole, so there's plenty of room for other utilities to be added to it.
Okay. And it, did you say that um Lot twenty, is there, is it, is there a pro- a building that's uh, is there a proposal for construction there? Is that the, the purpose, or is this just anticipated expansion?
Um, I'm not sure as far as their building permits are concerned, this is just what I need to do to move forward with. If I want to put anything here, I need to have permission, obviously, so uh, I don't think I have any information on that job pulled up right now, but but yeah, it's for um two different buildings.
Okay, just looking at uh.
Oh, it's four new houses, actually.
Okay, so there's, there's probably some, there's, I'm assuming there's a development and, or, or so a few, a few new houses that they're planning. That's, that's the, that's what's happening here.
Right, I don't know how far into the, the process they are, but they've obviously surveyed it and are ready to ask us to start planning for power.
Okay. All right, I mean, this seems to make sense to me. I'll, um, I'll, I'll open it up again. Counselor Kozinski, any, any further comments?
I have no further questions.
Counselor Flood?
Uh, no further questions. If you are ready to entertain a motion, I have one set.
Yeah, so my, my, obviously, my only re- request would be that we include the typical boilerplate language that we use about uh maintaining, you know, access for city, city communications or expansion of communications.
Yep, so a motion to approve the request for a solely owned pole to be installed near twenty dash thirty Ballard Street with the right for future municipal use to be included. Is that precise enough?
Um, yeah, I think for the sake of this recommendation, we can, we can, um, we can, um, uh, modify the language for the full council vote.
Motion to recommend approval is what I should have said, sorry, to recommend the approval of the request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, I'll take a vote, Counselor Kozinski.
Yes.
Counselor Flood?
I'm an I.
And I am also a yes in terms of recommend, this, making this recommendation. Um, Anthony, can you send me um, your contact info, cause I, if, if you have time just to jump on a quick call tomorrow, just so I can make sure I'm I completely understand the proposal prior to um um, for, to full meeting on Wednesday?
Yes, I can. Is there a private message option in Zoom? I don't use Zoom very often.
I don't know if there is, but uh, my, um, my email is just ozaret, that's O Z A R E T at easthamptonma.gov.
Okay. I'll just do an email right after this.
Okay, awesome. Uh, and the motion passed three, nothing. I think I already said that. Um, okay.
Um, the poll petition, we have that PDF, I'm sorry. Uh, if we don't, it'd be good to have.
Yeah, it's, it is, yes, Counselor Kozinski, it's in this November seventeenth.
In the packet.
Packet, yep. Okay, so uh moving on, we have another uh poll request. Uh, sorry, this is still Ballard Street. Okay, we have another poll request um for um Park Street. Um, and uh Nick, that's what you're here for?
Correct.
Okay, would you mind uh introducing for the committee this poll request?
Sure, so um I have petitioning for a new pole. On Park Street, forty-five Park Street, at the Williston North Hampton School. Um, it is right next to the uh the church or the parish um portion of Park Street there. They're gonna be upgrading the electric service for the church there. And um, pretty significantly, so they need a new pole in the street, as all the poles in that area have too much equipment on them to accommodate this. So we're requesting one new midspan pole um in which we can go underground from there to the church and provide new service.
This is the congregational church? Is that where we're talking about?
Yes, at forty-five Park Street.
Okay.
Kind of right in the middle of the uh Williston North Hampton.
Oh, I see where we are.
Is the chapel across from the campus center? Is that the one?
Yeah.
The chapel, okay, great.
Oh, I see, I saw what you were talking about. Okay, okay.
That's the right term, chapel.
Yeah. I, yeah, Owen was thinking further towards the center of town.
Yeah, I was thinking something different, but we have a, uh, I don't think this is the right map that I have. Here, let me, I'm gonna share my screen and show what we have in the packet. I'm thinking that we have an incorrect map here. Uh, I'll give you one moment. Um, so this is uh farther down on Park Street. This is, can you all see this? This is Parkin South.
Yeah, I'm aware of this project. This is a Verizon project.
Okay, do you think, uh, maybe the other, maybe the one that you were, you were asking about, we don't have, it's not submitted yet?
Um, possibly, I submitted this quite a while ago. But, um.
I think this is a different, okay, this is different.
I mean, this would be, could you go back to the map?
I'm sorry, yeah.
He, oh no, that is way further down, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm aware of this one. I, there are multiple poll petitions on Park Street, so.
Well, let's, let's switch gears then. Uh, and I'll, uh, we'll have to talk about um, we'll have to talk about this other one, find out where that one is in, in process, the one for Williston then. Um, so let me back up then. I apologize, Nick. So this, this is a request to um locate, this is a request for a jointly owned pole uh to fifty-two and a half E about fifty-two M on the west side of Park Street, uh approximately eighty-six feet northerly from the center line of South Street. Um. This is a midspan support pole. So, uh, could you, do you, are you familiar enough on the fly to, uh, are you familiar enough on the fly to tell us a little bit about this one?
Yeah, sorry, my uh, I'm doing double duty. I got my toddler here with me.
We're all there.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I, I actually met on site with this too. The reason that this is, I'm not this is a Verizon owned area versus um the pole I was petitioning is an EverSource pole, but the, but this one is gonna be joint owned. So basically, for this pole, um, there's gonna be a future solar field on the on the um, the east side of Park Street here.
Mm-hmm.
And in order to accommodate that solar field, they are asking for a new pole. Uh, they were petitioning here in, as a means to cross the street essentially.
Mm-hmm.
All, all the other poles kind of have too much equipment on them for us to use.
Okay.
Um, especially with the development of the, the new rotary project there.
Right.
Um, this is kind of the best option we could come up with. Um, was, was a new pole here, and then the plan would be to go kind of at like a kind of a forty-five degree angle to the south. Um, bring overhead lines across the street and have a new pole on private property um, on the, on the east side, and from there, it would go underground to a, a future solar field.
This is, is the property in question, the parcel that is owned, is that the parcel that's owned by Williston where that was um, that part of it, there, a, a pond part of it, there uh is the current traffic circle rotary?
Yes, Will, Williston does, um, is the customer that we're working with for this.
So, so my
Counselor Kozinski.
My question is, where is the rotary on this map? I would presume it would have been closer.
It's, it's in, it's not represented.
Not on the map, is it?
Correct.
The map? What? It makes it hard to orient when we're not looking at the, the physical, the what, the way that the road is physically now.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't prepare this map. This is a Verizon product. Uh, so I can't really speak to that.
It's like they grabbed a map and plot down the, the poles and
But, but you know, the location, the location of this pole, the, the rotary is kind of irrelevant, cause we're north of South Street there, where nothing has really changed. But um, for your records, yeah, maybe you do want, you know, update a map, but
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'd have to ask the uh, the Verizon engineer who came up with this to make that edit.
I mean, I, I think I would, I'm, I would lean towards for the purposes of, of, of um an informed discussion would be helpful to understand the layout, because part of the parcel, part of one of these parcels, I believe, is ac- is occupied by the rotary. I'm not sure. Uh, maybe not. I'm thinking is, is uh, let me, so is it, is it um one ninety-two Park Street that we're talking about where the solar field would be?
Um, I believe one ninety-two is a, is a house.
Okay, so.
The resident, I think it's one ninety-eight.
Right, so that, I believe, was the parcel that we acquired in the land swap. We acquired a portion of that, right, Counselor Kozinski?
I believe so.
The rotary is like a little semicircle.
Right in that general area.
Yeah. I, I think it would be helpful to, um, how time sensitive is, is this, Nick?
Um, I don't think I have the authority to speak on that matter. Like I said, I was, I was consulted about the um, the possibility of a pole here, but really I need to speak to the customer and um Verizon. This is, this isn't really my project, so I don't want to, um.
So, if I understand this correctly, we're moving, the pole is moving north. The
No, this will, this will be a new pole.
It's addition pole, it's additional pole.
It's an additional pole.
This, this other one is a, um, this other one is an existing pole.
Might require a site visit. Mr. Chair.
I would agree with
The reason is, because if you come down South Street and look left, that can become very confusing.
Mm-hmm.
And having a second pole from a line of sight just becomes something that I would like to take a closer look and maybe have a site visit with representatives who could say, hey, okay, this pole is gonna be this size and it's gonna be here.
Yeah, I would be of the mind that we also need a, a map that properly represents the roadway, so let's try to, um, let's try to set, let's try to acquire that and set something up. Counselor Flood, you had, it looked like you wanted to say something?
I would just agree with Counselor Kozinski. I mean, I know there's one pole existing there, but I do have some visi- visibility concerns with placing another one, just with this map not being completely accurate. Um, I know that that's become a, a bit of a difficult intersection at the moment as people get used to it. So you don't want to add any more hazards to it until, yeah, I would, I would also just second the idea of a possible site visit just to get eyes on it and understand how it's going to affect visibility.
Yeah, and again, I think that's where the existence of the rotary plays a significant role in terms of when you're talking about traffic visibility, so um, let's try to, if, if the other board members are, it's just in general concurrence, I don't know if it's a vote, but I'm happy to take a vote, but I would agree that we need an updated map and, and to schedule a site visit. Um, you know, sooner rather than later, so we can, we can work on that offline. Um, Nick, I appreciate.
Happy to meet somebody next week if that made sense, and it, not to hold anything up, the object isn't to delay any project, but to, to just fully make sure that we're, we're really looking after the public's interest here.
Would we?
I could also be available next week.
Okay, let me look at my calendar, cause we'd have to, if we'd have to.
Be posted.
Right, exactly, so um, let's um, let's try to figure that out. So, uh, um, with the, what, well, if we're talking about now, though, would you have a general, I mean, would you want, this would be during the day? Would you have to do it during daylight?
That would be best.
Yeah.
Um. Well.
I don't know that I, we could move this forward before then?
No, I, well, I, I agree. Um, so I'm ju- I'm just looking quickly at, uh, uh, you know, my only real availability during the day is, is um Tuesday mornings. Um, I don't know what your availability is, Counselors.
I'm not, actually, I apologize. I wasn't thinking. I may not be available Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
I apologize. I, I could do something Friday of this week, if that could be arranged. I'm having surgery.
Right, you'd said that.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I'm also
I keep putting that out of mind.
I can do Tuesday morning if that's helpful. I could also possibly make some time Friday, however, Tuesday would be much easier.
And I also, I mean, if there's, if there's two of you, I trust the opinion of the, of the, of the committee members that um, my, I know my schedule's restrictive. Um, if you'd want to set, um, if, if you, Counselors Flood and Kozinski want to set a date for like neck, the end of next week, and you meet, and then I could just, we could just talk about it. Um, if, I, I'd be open to that as well, if you're okay with that.
At the end of next week? Uh, yeah, whichever, not, the end of next week works.
We're talking like the tenth?
It should work fine for me.
Okay, so do, do, do the two of you have a proposed time? I won't be able to be there, but or do you want to talk offline? We could talk offline.
Let's talk offline and figure that out, but my availability definitely opens up, so.
If I can interject for one moment.
Yes.
If, if the pole were exactly north of the dead center north, that might help us if it, it looks that, that, so a map and a vis- site visit. I was just trying to think of another way of trying to deal with this. It looks like it's twenty-two feet to the north, but it could be the north, the northwest. And did, 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 did the rotary change since, yeah, so.
Yeah, Nick.
With the site visit portion, and I'm available, do my best to make myself available.
Okay, Nick, yes.
Um, I was just gonna say that, you know, before you go scheduling these, you know, site visits, um, this isn't my project. I'm kind of just speaking on this as a courtesy, just cause I was out there um to discuss. But um, we should wrap in the Verizon engineer who, you know, is designing this. Um, Steve Mica, I know very well, he's who I met out there with this. So I can um put together just an email, maybe I'll send something over to um Councilman Zaret and Steve Mica from Verizon, just to kind of acquaint each other, and then you guys can set some Councilman Zaret and Steve Mica from Verizon, just to kind of acquaint each other, and then you guys can set something up, and if I need to be out there, um, as well, I can, but, um, you know, this is a Verizon project, so.
No, I appreciate that, I appreciate you pinch hitting too, um, we will, uh, I'll try to get on the phone with you tomorrow, we can, we'll have to find out where this other proposal is, I apologize, when you had uh, emailed me about South Street, I had a South Street proposal in front of me, and I thought that we were talking about this, so uh, we'll get that straightened out.
Hopefully, at least made it over to, uh, the city of East Hampton in some way, or else I'm a little behind.
Right, no, where does that usually go, the procurement office, or?
Um, that's a good question, I'm not sure, we have, um, we have another department that sends these out once I get all the relevant information. I can, I can check on my end to see where it's at, but
Can you send me, do you have information about that proposal you could send me?
Uh, yeah, let me see. What I gave our group. Oh, he's still there, I just had to change the screen.
You're doing a great job multitasking.
You gotta do what you gotta do. They can still hear me, buddy.
Well, you can find it and send it to me afterwards, I just want to, I want to try to help you figure out where this is in the process.
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, tomorrow, when I'm in the office, I will, um, I'll put together an email for both this and for the Park and South Street project.
Okay, that's great, um, again, I'm sorry that I misunderstood which one you were talking about.
That's okay.
Um, okay, um, so, um, do either of the committee members have any questions for our, our ever-source rep before, um, before, um, we, we let him go?
No, that's super helpful, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Counselor Kozinski?
No questions, I just would like to thank you also, and thank you for your assistance.
Hey, anytime.
Nick, thanks, well, uh, let's touch base and, and sort this all out tomorrow, or?
Sounds like a plan.
All right.
I gotta move to cook dinner now, so
Okay.
Take care, everybody.
Bye bye now.
Okay, so to summarize, um, we, we agreed, um, uh, based on the, um, review of the proposal for the negotiations of the, uh, Dagel property, um, property line as well as easement, uh, to recommend that, to allow the mayor to enter into those negotiations. Um, we had, uh, consensus, uh, three, nothing, uh, on the, uh, Ballard Street pole location and, uh, those two pads, and then we need more information about, uh, the South and Park Street um, pole, which will include, uh, an updated map to reflect the presence of the, uh, roundabout rotary, whatever you'd like to call it, traffic circle, and, um, the um, a site visit, is that correct, did I summarize that properly?
Yeah, I mean, if I get an updated map and I even just go drive by there tomorrow and kind of visualize it, that could be enough, but this map is just not as conducive to visualizing it at the moment with the rotary not being included in there, it's so I, I'll do, I'll do a personal field trip tomorrow as well, in case we have scheduling issues.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make that commitment as well. Um, but I, I would definitely, at the very least, like to see an updated map for the public is, you know.
Agreed, okay.
And the rest of council.
Okay, and if, and if the two members do want to meet next Friday, um, we have a little, we have a little bit of time to make that determination, it's only Monday, so, in terms of posting. Um, okay, uh, so, on that note, Counselor Flood, do you have anything else to add on any of these agenda items?
I do not.
Counselor Kozinski?
We're good.
Okay, thanks again for, I'm sorry about muddling through that first item, I got a little turned around those maps, I need to familiarize myself a little better. Um, then at this time, um, we've addressed all of our business in one way or another, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Oh, we have a motion and a second, uh, uh, and Counselor Flood, how do you vote?
I am an I.
Counselor Kozinski?
Hi.
And I am also an I, so, uh, vote is three, nothing in favor of adjourning. We are adjourned, um, thank you all, um, we'll see you Wednesday, and, um, I'll, I'll work on some of those items on my end, uh, with the meetings and maps and such, too.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a great night, gentlemen.
Yeah, you too.